Hello, on behalf of the Scottsbluff Garing United Chamber of Commerce, welcome to our candidate's forum for the 2024 general election. This candidate's forum features individuals running for Scottsbluff Public Schools Board of Education. This candidate's forum is one of two being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scottsbluff Garing United Chamber of Commerce. Along with my co-chair, Don Wolf, my name is Bill Boyer and we appreciate you for joining us. We would like to thank the Rural Radio Scottsbluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, as well as Scottsbluff Public Schools for hosting us today. As a reminder, there are four candidates running for Scottsbluff Public Schools Board of Education. In the November 5th general election, you'll be allowed to vote for up to three candidates. The top three vote-getters will be elected to serve the four-year term. Before we meet the candidates, I'd like to go over the format for this forum. First, I'd like to let you know that this forum is being recorded live and is being presented to you unedited. Before we began recording, candidates randomly chose the order where they proceeded and will be introduced. We'll begin by asking a question and each candidate will be given 90 seconds to respond. Then, there will be an optional 30-second rebuttal for each candidate following the answer. After the final question, each candidate will be allowed one minute for a closing statement. There's a timer in the room and each candidate has been informed of the format and the rules prior to tonight. None of the questions have been given to the candidates in advance. Now, let's meet the candidates for this forum for Scottsbluff Public Schools Board of Education: Paul W. Snyder, who couldn't be with us tonight; Beth Marigan; Reg Preston; and Scott Rising. We'll begin with our first question for you, Beth. What prompted you to run again for this position?
That's a great question. I'm excited to be here tonight and to be able to answer questions so folks can feel informed on November 5th. I know that education opens doors for people and the education that a student receives at Scottsbluff Public Schools is an opportunity for that student to walk through the door of their choice, to see the educational opportunities in front of them, and from those educational opportunities to then develop a career for themselves, to be able to see themselves in our community as a devoted member to our community. Specifically for me, I think I have qualities that a person on a school board possesses. I'm able to listen well and I'm able to take what I hear from both the administrators, the teachers, the students themselves, and community members, reflect on what I hear, take the information that I've received, and make decisions. As a board, we each vote and have the opportunity to vote on decisions. And as a good listener and a person who can reflect on those things that I've heard, I'm able to make good decisions. And I thought, over the last four years, I've learned a great deal. I've worked to understand what happens on the school board and I want to continue to use what I've learned to make good decisions for our district, for our students, and for our teachers.
Reg, what prompted you to run for this position?
Thanks, Bill, and I'd like to start by thanking you for your talents in moderating tonight's session and all of the team and the staff behind the scenes that have made this successful so that the voters can get a chance to hear from each of us the answers to tonight's questions and, as Beth said, to vote in for us. So, thank you. So, I am a Scottsbluff County native. I grew up in Scottsbluff County South Alignment and graduated from Garing and then went off to college in the Navy. And I just recently retired after 20 years of service through the Navy. I was looking for an opportunity to serve my community in a new way now that I had moved back home with my wife and daughters. And the school board presented itself as an opportunity where I could bring the very diverse experiences I've had around the Navy and around the world to bear, to help ensure that we are producing the best opportunities and bringing the best capabilities for our students to succeed in life as they leave, to go on and achieve whatever it is they're going to achieve and wherever they go in life. So, ultimately, for me, my drive to run for the school board was to seek an opportunity to serve and I look forward to doing that on the Board of Education.
Scott, what prompted you to rerun for this position?
So, four years ago, when I first ran for the school board, we'd been parents in the district for a long time. So, I grew up in the area and went away for college and then we moved to Lincoln for about four years. So, I was gone from the area for about eight years. Right after we had our first child, we moved home and then all of our kids grew up in the Scottsbluff Public Schools. And so, I wanted a way to give back. I really enjoyed my time there. My mom had been a teacher in the district for a long, long time. And as a parent, I thought I knew a lot about what the district did and we were involved. But when I got onto the board, it is amazing how much work there is and how much I didn't know at the time. I feel like we've done a lot of good things over the last four years, but I didn't feel like I was done yet. So, there's a lot more, I think, that we have to contribute. This is a great board to work with and so it just felt like it wasn't time to step away. So, I feel like there's more to contribute and I'm excited to do that work.
Beth, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
Reg?
A personal thanks.
Okay. Next question is for you, Reg. How should school funding evolve from where we are now? And would you support switching completely to a state-funded model? Why or why not?
So, school funding here in the state of Nebraska is primarily supported through property taxes, but it is also significantly supplemented at the state level. And there's been a lot of conversation at the legislature, most recently in their special session, and we expect to see that again when they go into session this winter, about how much of the burden the state should pick up to lift the burden off the local property taxpayer. As for myself, I see enormous benefit to having significant stake in the tax paid at the local level in the school district so that folks can have a say and have influence over what their schools do. I would be concerned if we became a fully state-funded model, that the legislature or Lincoln or higher levels of state government would have more influence and sway over us as a school board and ultimately the entire school district. And I think I would much prefer some version that keeps the bulk of the influence local, even if the state aid does come to bear to help us produce the best quality education that we can. It is certainly a necessary ingredient as the state is running, it's certainly a necessary ingredient as Scottsbluff Schools are running, but yet and still, I don't think I would be in favor of a fully state-funded model.
Scott, how should school funding evolve from where we are now? And would you support switching completely to a state-funded model? Why or why not?
So, you know, the funding model for our schools is certainly changing. As Reg pointed out, the legislature is trying to do some interesting things. I would not support a fully state-funded model of education. I don't think that removal of local control is really wise. I would much prefer to have those discussions with the property tax owners and the constituents that we serve. You know, that being said, we don't necessarily get to make the rules, we just get to follow them. So, there have been some good things that have come out of some of the changes. Obviously, the enhanced reimbursement for special education has been huge for our district. We have been a large recipient of state aid funds in the past, so it's not that we're not thankful for that. We try to make the best use of those monies. You know, when we had the opportunity to vote for extending the levy an additional 3%, there was really no appetite on the board to do that. And again, that's local control, so we're responsible for what we spend, we're responsible to our local constituents, and I think that's the right model. I think in a state like this, you have to do a little bit of both. So, they'll keep making the rules and we'll do the best we can to do what we're given and use it responsibly.
Beth, how should school funding evolve from where we are now? And would you support switching completely to a state-funded model? Why or why not?
You know, I think us being here tonight and the folks who are watching this and the folks who are going to go vote on November 5th are doing that because they have a stake and because they have a care about what happens both on a national, state, and a local level. And so, I think having that vote matter and have it matter in a place at home where we're investing in our students and where we're putting our money to work for the future of our community, that means that our local school board members have an ability to impact the budget of the school. So, I do not think the state should have a complete revenue or rather budget control of the local school districts. I think there should be a commitment from the state to have quality education in each of its districts, and that may be backed up with funding. And I think the 80% reimbursement that we receive for special education is important to that. But being able to look at your local school board number and tell them your opinion and have that opinion matter when the budget is built each year is an important step for our community so that we can fund our education in the way that fits for Scottsbluff and for Scottsbluff Public Schools.
Reg, anything else you'd like to add?
Just one small thing to add. When the governor was in town, I guess, a couple of months ago at this point, he was quick to point out that the state has levied a number of administrative burdens and requirements on school districts. That does then necessitate some of the costs that the districts bear in order to meet the state requirements. So, I would look and be hopeful that the governor, in concert with the legislature, would work to potentially white-size any requirements that would help us. And I would certainly look to our superintendent to help lead that charge from our local area and with our district. But it is all a long conversation and we look forward to being a part of it if they do make changes.
Scott, anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing else to add.
Beth? Okay, Scott, the next question is for you. Given declining rural population, many of the smaller school districts in western Nebraska are experiencing extreme financial difficulties. Do you think there's an option for additional consolidation or even the possibility of a county-wide school district with multiple attendance centers?
You know, obviously, there is concern about smaller districts. We have a smaller school ourselves in our district. I'm not sure that I'm worried about consolidation with multiple districts. The advantage that Scottsbluff Public Schools has is we are in a very strong financial position. We have managed to maintain that strong financial position by making good choices. I think we'll continue to make good choices. I think that if we needed to consolidate with other districts, that just speaks to the level of coordination and cooperation that we'll have to have across our communities. I don't think that there is necessarily a winner or a loser across school districts. You know, we talked to other boards, I know that Dr. Dick speaks to other superintendents, and really, we're all here for the kids and I think that that is, that's ultimately all of our focus. So, obviously, I'm glad that we are in a strong financial position and I guess consolidation has not been one of the things that we've had a lot of discussion about in the board over the last four years.
Beth, do you think there's an option for additional consolidation or even the possibility of a county-wide school district with multiple attendance centers?
I think we have to be eyes wide open to the area that we live in and the population density that we have around us. I don't think that's a decision that you reach for, I don't think that's a decision that you go after. I think that's a decision where the circumstances present themselves. And I think when that decision presents itself, the Board of Education of any districts involved has to think first about what is the best thing for each of the students. Scottsbluff is about every student, every day, and that should be true if we start to consider consolidating with any other districts. What is the best thing for those students? But the other part of that decision, and it's probably what will drive the decision, is financial. And so, the financial standing of any districts that are considering consolidating is going to come into the picture and those budgets will have to be considered, which goes back to what we just talked about. When those budgets are considered, and we're talking about specific places, two communities, two sets of students that are potentially combining, then the budget of those two districts needs to be seen and spoken about by the boards that are in charge of them, these people who live in those communities, and that's the discussion that has to be forefront as we consider what's best both for this area but specifically for those students involved.
Reg, do you think there's an option for additional consolidation or even the possibility of a county-wide school district with multiple attendance centers?
So, with that question, I think the first thing that I would like to better understand is what specifically is the nature of the problem that we're trying to solve? Too often, we will go after an improvement that can sometimes end up as an improvement for the sake of improvement without actually addressing an issue. Issue implied, as both of my partners up here at the table have mentioned, is it's probably going to be a financial drive or incentive that would cause consideration for consolidation. I am always open to discussion and opportunity and would, you know, heartily love to be a part of that if we could properly understand what was the nature that was driving a change such as that. This county has seen a complete loss, actually statewide, complete loss of Class 1 school districts. So, we have seen enormous consolidation in schools in our own area and everyone has a very recent memory of schools they attended or friends that they knew that attended those country's schools. So, we have seen that happen in our area that has drawn the district numbers significantly down to what they are today. So, ultimately, it comes down to what problem are we solving, how are we going to solve it, and what would that look like? But above all else, one thing that I think would be very necessary to hold true would be the individual culture of schools. There are many large districts in the country that hold, for example, many high schools. Each of those high schools has a very unique identity, same as our current high schools do around the county. So, we would want to make sure that we could preserve that, even if we did have to consolidate at the very upper end of the echelon of any given district.
Scott, anything else you'd like to add?
Nothing to add.
Beth?
No, thank you.
Okay. Beth, our next question is for you. We're sitting in the new Scottsbluff Public Schools Education Center. There's been a lot of strong feedback, both positive and negative, from community members, especially about the price tag and the acquisition of this property. What are your thoughts about this building and its impact on early childhood learning in our community?
This building is a holistic look at the education that a student receives when they enter Scottsbluff Public Schools. You know, the opportunities that education opens for students don't just begin when they're in high school. The opportunities begin when they're in preschool or even before preschool. And this building allows us to serve a young population, the preschool students, who are currently waiting to enter into our school system. So, being able to serve every single one of those students and enter them into Scottsbluff Public Schools at the time that their parents are wanting to enter them into school begins that opportunity. I feel very strongly that this educational opportunity should be given to every single person who wants it. And when those parents want to enroll their student and we need to put them on a waitlist, that's a missed opportunity for that specific student and for us as a district. For that student to enter our district and then to pursue their education through the next 12 years of life, that's an opportunity for us too, to serve that family, to serve that student. And purchasing this building allowed us to serve all of the people that are asking us for that opportunity right now. So, I feel very positively about this building and the opening, the opportunities that it gives us at the district.
Reg, what are your thoughts about this building and its impact on early childhood learning in our community?
So, this building will become a fantastic facility for the pre-K and preschool children in our community to get the services that they need. There is an obvious, well-documented lack of service providers, not only in our own community but so many rural communities. So, this will probably become the shining star of western Nebraska in that particular regard. And I think I can say as the only candidate on the ticket for the school board that is not a member of the school board, I was equally concerned at the time of the decision to purchase this building that the plan had not been fully thought through on how to best utilize a facility of this size. It is very large. The preschool will utilize less than approximately 1/3 of the facility. So, we have a potentially very large facility build that's going to come with that in perpetuity for as long as we have the building here. So, as a future potential school board member, I would look forward to the opportunity to help address those concerns with the community. Now that we have this building, how can we best use it to its fullest capabilities? There are a number of things that are just not fully fleshed out yet and there are a number of costs that we need to make sure that we fully understand as time progresses so we understand how much it takes to operate this facility so that we can use it to its fullest capabilities. We're just not quite there yet and I do think there's opportunity for growth that we don't completely understand yet.
Scott, what are your thoughts on, about this building and its impact on early childhood learning in our community?
So, I'm thrilled that we've had the opportunity to purchase this building and I think the use of it for our Early Childhood Education Center, I think, will be a tremendous benefit to our, to our community and to our students. Those of you who have not seen our early childhood facilities, they are spread across the district, they're in a lot of less-than-ideal spaces, and bringing everybody together in one, one spot is going to really, really increase the functionality of those buildings. It is a large building. That was a concern of ours when we purchased it. That being said, for the price of the building and for the price of the renovation, when we have had show-and-tell sessions, we felt that the community, if you take the time to come in and talk to us about what we're doing, I think we're, we're able to win you over. This is a beautiful facility. It's probably a $40 million facility that we were able to purchase for $1.5 million. And honestly, there's not a lot of people in the community that can use a space this big. We can use it, we, we are developing plans for the use of the additional space and if we, it also gives us flexibility for the future. So, if there are some other things that we need to do as enrollment grows or shrinks, we have this facility that will prevent us from using a bond issue in the future.
Beth, anything you'd like to add about the education center?
No, thank you.
Reg?
Only one point and just echo what Scott mentioned. Any preschool staff member in Scottsbluff Public Schools would be quick to tell you how substandard our current facilities were, so something did have to be done in that regard. But I think this would fit in many other categories for Scottsbluff Public Schools facilities. We really need to take a holistic look at all of our facilities to figure out what need, needs to be served first or next in order to get all of the cards in the right order. And with this one, we certainly invested in preschool and we have a number of other facilities that will probably have to wait because of this investment.
Scott, anything else on this building?
I think the only other thing I would say is, again, this is a result of our having a strong financial position. This building did not come with any new taxes to the taxpayer. We took it out of additional funds, the renovation, as well as coming out of monies that we had already set aside. We felt like we have been fiscally responsible in the costs that we have budgeted for this building and so we're excited, can't wait for kids to come in next fall.
Reg, our next question's for you. In this day and age with nationwide threats being made against educational facilities, many of them unfounded, how do you think the school should balance keeping the students safe versus wasting time and resources on false threats?
Thanks for that question and that one is near dear to my heart. My daughter at a previous school, before we moved back to this area, was in session in the school day when they were subject to a swatting call, as was a number of other schools in that state at that time. And my daughter happened to have been caught in the hallway between classes and was exceedingly fortunate to get a chance to duck into a door before it closed so that she could have an opportunity to shelter in place. So, I take that very seriously regarding these swatting calls. We have to be prepared. Preparation is key on these issues. And I think Scottsbluff Public Schools is probably in a good position as long as we continue to work with our partners. I look forward to the results of the event that's coming up here on the 8th of October where we'll be exercising some emergency action plans with local fire and police and other entities. So, I think, could you give me your phrase again of what, what this was, if it was not...
Yeah. What do you think the school should do to balance keeping students safe versus wasting time and resources on false threats?
Right. So, we have to spend resources to be prepared for those false threats because we have to take them all very seriously. There's not a district in the nation that would ever stand for not taking that seriously because these are our children.
Scott, how do you think the school should balance keeping students safe versus wasting time and resources on false threats?
Yeah, I don't think any of us view spending money on security as, as wasting time or money. It's, it's one of the pillars of our strategic plan. It's certainly nothing that we ever like thinking about or talking about, but just because we don't like thinking about it because it's unpleasant doesn't mean that you can't be prepared. Obviously, you know, last year at Garing, they had a false threat and I know that all of us were in the loop and it is a scary moment. It doesn't matter if, if there are kids or Garing's kids or anybody's kids. You know, we knew kids in that school who were scared, we knew kids in that school who were afraid. It is sad commentary on our society that, that our kids have to go to school scared. And, and I think the balance really needs to be, you know, how do we provide a safe environment without having them live in a culture of fear? And I think that's, you know, why you do drills and that's why you do preparations and that's why you think through the worst things that can happen. And you try to be as preventative as you can and then hopefully our children can go to school and not have to think about all of those things. Again, we, we never want anything to happen, certainly would rather, you know, not have to deal with it, but that's the reality of that we're in, so.
Beth, how do you think the school should balance keeping students safe versus wasting time and resources on false threats?
I think the best way for us to find that balance is to prepare and to prepare, prepare very well. And in order to prepare very well, we both create internal plans through our safety and security office. We also build relationships with our law enforcement and we're able to build those relationships, both in our simulation exercises like we'll do next week, but also in real moments when we're determining, is this a real, a legitimate threat or are we in a false-threat situation? The experience of both the safety and security teams of Scottsbluff Public Schools and the law enforcement in our community, they have the background knowledge and they have the current threats that are being seen across the United States. So, I think both preparing ourselves as a school district as well as building those relationships, I think our students are involved as well. I think they are very connected to each other, both digitally and then face-to-face. So, I think having the connection between the students and educating them when we're doing these simulations as well. The students and the teachers are, are the exact people that we are planning and preparing for, so they're an integral part of our preparations.
Anything else you'd like to add on that, Reg?
Just a quick note to say that I think that investment in preparation also comes along with tools and facilities as well and everything, all the way down to the simple door lock mechanisms or door jam mechanisms that can prevent an intruder from getting into a classroom, would, you know, allow us to provide psychological comfort to those that are sheltering in place in addition to actual safety should a swatting threat actually be a distinct threat where someone has made an entrance into a building. So, there's a wide scope from preparation to facilities that has to take place there.
Anything else, Scott?
Yeah, I, I think the only thing I would add is one of the things that is often overlooked is the relationship that our students and our staff have. And we've had a number of incidents this fall where there have been students who heard something and trusted a teacher or an administrator enough to go to them and say, hey, I heard this and, you know, I, I don't want anybody to get in trouble, but... And I think that relationship of trust is actually a huge help in the preventing of violence because you can go to those people and see what's going on.
Beth, anything else you'd like to add? Okay, our next question is for you, Scott. What new areas do you think the career academies should expand into and why?
That's a great question. We cover so many areas already in our career academies. You know, I think there are, I think that is an area where we were always looking for the next thing. You know, I, I think about all the different areas we have. We're good in health, we're good in some of the trades, welding, decent mechanics. Our future educators, we have some video editing and production. It might be good to have a little bit more skills developed in computer programming and design. We do have those skills, but maybe try to find some areas in the community that could use those. You know, I, I can't say enough about our career academies. I think it's huge. We could probably look for some, some agriculture as well. Maybe there could be some, some, some opportunities for partnership there as well.
Beth, what area, new areas do you think the career academies should expand into and why?
I think that the career academies, I received an interesting question the first time I, I ran for this office four years ago. The question was, what agenda items did I want to pursue as a school board member? And I said, well, there are, there are no agenda items that I am here to pursue as a school board member. I am here to make the best decisions for our school district in terms of the students, the teachers, and the staff. I think that question is a pool of answers together. I don't think that... I don't think that answer comes from Beth Marigan. I don't think it comes from one individual. I think the drive of the students and the opportunities that they're seeking, I think the best answers are going to come from the students. I think the teachers, I think the community, exactly what our community needs. Now, to specifically answer the question, I won't stop there. I'll agree that I think we could use some more looks at agriculture. I think our community is based largely in agriculture, so a wide variety of educational opportunities there, and I think we could find mentor relationships there as well. And those would both benefit the students that we're serving, but it also would turn right back around and be a benefit, I think, for our community as well.
Reg, what new areas do you think the career academy should expand into and why?
So I'd offer, there's probably three inputs to this problem if it looks like we need to grow our career academies. The first one would be simply market forces. What opportunities for employment are there that exist that we might not have covered? Student interest, as Beth mentioned, what are our students interested in? And then finally, that community involvement and interest. If we have a growing community that is already involved with our school system, we're certainly well positioned to take their input. We're already well supported by the community in our career academies. So looking to grow and tighten those bonds with the community around us, I think, would be one of the, the third way to figure out where our career academies should expand. I'll echo the agriculture growth potential. As a local farmer here, I will tell you that that is something that has always held my personal attention. Despite being a Garing graduate, I did come to the FFA, to the ag program over here in Scottsbluff as a student in high school because that's the only place I could get that part of that education. So there's, I think, enormous potential there because Scottsbluff has a very long-running ag program. And if we invested further there, that would only be to the benefit of our students. Obviously, that is an enormous cultural input into our community around us, being Scottsbluff County what it is and the longstanding agricultural production that we've had here.
Scott, anything else you'd like to add on career academies?
I think that I would just add that it's not so much the what or the specific ones, it's the how. And I would say that how we are positioned to respond very quickly to the community's needs. Again, that's a, that is a function of having great staff and great community partnerships. And I think we'd be very responsive to anything the community would come up with. And as a school district, I think we can respond very quickly to that. And so, yeah, no matter what it is, I think we can accommodate it.
Beth, anything else on career academies?
I think in general, I want to say how positively I feel about career academies. The theme that I'm weaving together here is that education is an opportunity, and those opportunities are ones that students need to choose. And when students choose those opportunities, they are passionate, they are invigorated, and they're ready to become community members who contribute. And so when we provide those opportunities for all types of things, then we serve all types of students. And that is the every child, every day that Scottsbluff Public Schools does.
Reg, anything else you'd like to add?
I'll only add that when my wife and I decided to move back to the area and selected living inside the Scottsbluff School District, this was a significant part of our reason why we chose to come here. Our kids are probably too young to decide on their careers at this point, but the opportunities that Scottsbluff Public Schools has put together in these academies is fantastic. And if they chose to participate in them, even better. But it just opened the opportunity for even more students, and I'm confident that that is probably in the decision tree for other folks who, sorry, I missed my spot.
Beth, our next question's for you. One area of concern regarding facilities is the lack of a swimming and diving facility for the swim team to practice and compete. With the most recent failure of the City of Scottsbluff bond issue to build a new aquatic center, what ideas do you have for Scottsbluff Public Schools to possibly partner or assist with other public or private entities to help secure such a facility in our community?
I think the key part of that question is the ideas because this is a community endeavor. It is a community financial need. I think we should have a pool here in Scottsbluff. I think the way we get there is a grouping together of multiple entities, and the framework was there for that during the last vote. So with the public voting no on it, I think we're in an interesting reflective moment of why was the vote no when there was a large body of people who thought the vote should go yes? They agreed, we should have a pool here. So when we reflect on why that vote was no, I think we look at the specific plans that we made for that pool. Perhaps we review the price tag of that pool, and we consider, how do we make that an option for our community in a different way? Since I think we still have that same body of people to include the swim team, to include therapeutic swimming, to include a lot of different populations of people that either need or want a pool, we reflect on that, and we regroup, and we pursue it in a different approach to gaining a pool here in Scottsbluff.
Reg, with the most recent failure of the City of Scottsbluff bond issue to build a new aquatic center, what ideas do you have for Scottsbluff Public Schools to possibly partner or assist with other public or private entities to help secure such a facility in our community?
Thanks for that question. I'm very passionate about a swim and dive facility here in town with Splash Arena gone from the Scottsbluff School System and the failing pools that we have in the community around us because they are simply aging out. I believe that we should be open to all options, everything from a very brute force method of a bond issue with the Scottsbluff Public Schools, and let our public weigh in to see if they want the schools to take that load on, up to and including partnering with all of our other elected leaders, all of our community leaders, all of our businesses, to see where we could go with not only inside Scottsbluff, but across the river with Garing, outside Scottsbluff and Garing, for the whole county. I think this is something that has to be addressed in the near term. We certainly did have that reflective period, but I think it's time to start having a conversation now in each of our towns, in each of our schools, and start working on a solution, be that singly led by Scottsbluff Public Schools, or with a coalition of our local elected leaders and our local businesses so that we can start moving instead of thinking back about what once was.
Scott, with the most recent failure of the City of Scottsbluff bond issue to build a new aquatic center, what ideas do you have for Scottsbluff Public Schools to possibly partner or assist with other public or private entities to help secure such a facility in our community?
Yeah, I do think that unfortunately, the community voting that bond issue down, and unfortunately, didn't lose by that many votes. I do feel like that was probably the right solution for our community. I was involved with some of the planning for that, for that effort. I don't believe that the Scottsbluff Public Schools is in a position to take on the financial responsibility solely of an aquatic facility. They're extraordinarily expensive endeavors. We were happy to partner with the community. We had committed money towards the operations of the pool. And I believe, obviously, I can't speak for the entire board, but I believe that the board would talk about it and would probably support such an effort in the future. That being said, you know, I think we need to educate the community again. There are aging pools here. You know, the Y Pool's not going to be around forever. The Westmore Pool isn't going to be around forever. Even the Garing Pool, it's not going to be around forever. And I think, you know, if we can split the cost of that improvement across multiple communities, multiple organizations, I really think that's the way to go. Obviously, if there's no community input for it, that's why we have a vote of the people. So I think the people have been heard, but I would support another community effort to bring an aquatic facility to this area. I think it's, I think it's very important for our schools.
Beth, anything you'd like to add on an aquatic center?
I do. I, I'm here, Scott, talking about the funding, and I think the, the funding is the beginning part of the conversation, and that quickly links to the need of the pool. And since the need of the pool is not just the need of the school districts, then the funding can't just be the school district. So I think that's where we talk about, the community comes together, and there are multiple funding sources because there's multiple uses that are being talked about or are needed. And so therefore, it becomes a community discussion, and then we just have to decide how big is that community discussion.
Reg, anything else?
I'll only add that there's been some recent discussion at the county level regarding sports tourism specifically, and growing sports tourism in Scottsbluff County. So if, if there is gaining momentum on the topic of bringing in outside entities, visiting teams in other towns from afar that would want to come to Scottsbluff and Garing, or Scottsbluff County writ large, this may be the moment where we can capitalize on that and make this type of venue something that not only would serve the schools, the community, the hospital, the physical support centers, but could also help us grow in an economic development perspective.
Scott, anything else on an aquatic center?
I would say that if this is something that concerns you as a citizen, then by all means there are ways to get involved. And this is something that, as many voices as can spread the word, certainly this is an area to be involved and to partner with the people who are trying to make this happen. So there's an opportunity, and again, would support it happening.
Reg, next question is for you. What do you see as the role of parents in the development of policies and curriculum impacting their children?
In one single word, it's critical. These are their children that we're educating. The parents are ultimately responsible for their child's well-being and upbringing. The school system, the public school system exists in its entirety to support the parent's effort in that regard. That said, I understand that there are a lot of working parents who do not have the time, the schedule, or the bandwidth to take on deep, detailed reviews of policies that would support that effort. That's why we have a school board. That's why we have an opportunity to let the community's interest be reflected by a sitting school board. And then they get to review our homework, and they get to hold us accountable at the ballot box every other, every two years of November with the election cycle. So summarizing succinctly as I possibly can, it's critical.
Scott, what do you see as the role of parents in the development of policies and curriculum impacting their children?
You know, I think that, I don't want to understate the role of a parent in their child's education. Obviously, the parent is the best person to know their kids and what's working for them. I do sit on the curriculum committee. I will tell you, it is, it is a lovely committee to be on. The people on that committee are concerned about our kids. They are concerned about what we're teaching our kids. You know, we are trying to do the very best we can. We get a chance to look at the materials that we're going to put in front of them. We get to review the books. We, you know, get to talk about what's working and what isn't. There are policies in our handbook. If parents are concerned about any materials, there are opportunities for them to interact with the administration at the school, or with the curriculum director, or with the school board. So I feel like there are a lot of opportunities for parents to get involved. Educating kids is, it's a huge effort. And so there are a lot of, there are a lot of hands that go into that. I will tell you from the people that I have met and had a chance to work alongside, they're very, very dedicated about what they do. They really don't have any interest in, you know, I guess, things that are, that are hot button issues. We're really trying to keep it kind of right down the fairway and, and do the best job for our kids.
Beth, what do you see as the role of parents in the development of policies and curriculum impacting their children?
I think that can vary from family to family. And I think that can vary even inside of a single family, based on the class that the student is in, or the specific policy that we're talking about. You know, when we as a board review the policies that are overarching the daily operations of Scottsbluff Public Schools, I always use an eye of, how would a person read this who doesn't read anything else that Scottsbluff Public School publishes? Do they understand it? Could they access it? Could they interact with us? Ask the teacher, ask the superintendent, ask the school board member. Is there a way for a person to access us as a school district, even if this is the one time they need to access us? This is the issue I care about. This is the problem I have. So when we review the policy and we update the policy, I look at it and I reread it with that perspective. When a parent does have a concern about a piece of curriculum, I think there is an ability to interact with the teachers, and there's an ability to interact with the principals and the superintendent when that is necessary. And I think that's, that's why you send your kid to school, because there is a teacher in front of the room who's going to teach it, but you're also going to be at home, and when you need to, you're going to teach something there, too. It's an individual thing per family, to answer that question.
Reg, anything you'd like to add?
Three, just my last.
Scott?
I would just add, you know, as a parent, I recall one instance where I had a disagreement about how the curriculum was being taught in a particular class. And I went through all the steps. I went and talked to the teacher, and I didn't necessarily feel like my, my fears were answered. And so I talked to the counselor and wound up having a talk with one of our content area specialists and the principal of the building. And I felt that as a parent, I was listened to. They, they were able to explain why, and it worked out well.
Beth, anything else you'd like to add?
No, thank you.
That was our last question, so you'll each have one minute to give us a closing statement, and we'll begin with you, Scott.
Great. So why do I want to be on the school board? First of all, I believe in our kids. We have developed high academic standards. We have early reading success that is off the charts. Our career and technical organizations are fantastic. Our activities are strong. We are developing curriculum for our English language learners that I think is fantastic. We're also building for the future. We are doing this early childhood expansion. We've done the elementary modernization projects, and we have created flexibility for the future. And mostly, it's about respecting our community. Over the last two years, we've lowered our tax request over each of the last two years. We highly value our community partnerships. We're not afraid to have the hard conversations respectfully with our constituents. We don't have anything to hide. And all of our services are available to all of our students, and I think that's the magic of public school education. We don't ask how much money you make. We don't ask if you can speak English. We are here to serve children.
Beth?
I believe education is an opportunity, and that opportunity opens doors for people. And so I feel very passionate about serving in a space where that opportunity is provided. Service is an important part of my life. I served 20 years in the Army, and in that time, I learned a thoughtful and thorough decision-making process, where I'm able to listen to others, consider others, hear their perspective, reflect, and then make decisions. Service in the military was hard. It was hard work. It's different work serving on the school board, but it still requires information gathering, thoughtful discussions with others. It takes being out and about, seeing students, seeing community members, hearing teachers. I enjoy that hard work. I enjoy being part of the school board and making that hard work turn into opportunities for students and families.
And Reg?
Well, again, Bill, thank you for your talents in moderating this session. Thanks to the chamber and everyone in the behind the scenes that's working to make this available to the voters and the KNEB staff. To the residents of Scottsbluff, as the only candidate for the Scottsbluff School Board that is not a current sitting member of the school board, I'd just like to reiterate my priorities. My first, above all else, is to support that interaction between a teacher and a student, or a coach and an athlete, and to recognize that everything that's further distant than that should get a significant amount of scrutiny from the board because our priority has to remain education and growth of our students. My second priority is to communicate with our stakeholders, be that students, teachers, and staff, or taxpayers. We need to work to ensure that our board processes are transparent, and everyone has the ability to participate and provide input as much as they feel necessary. And I look forward to working on my third priority, if elected, with my fellow board members and the superintendent, to continue and grow a sense of self-improvement and a culture of self-improvement, be that district-wide or at the individual level at Scottsbluff Public Schools.
Thank you. We'd like to thank all of our candidates running for Scottsbluff Public Schools Board of Education for participating in tonight's forum. We hope that this helps you in deciding who you wish to vote for. As a reminder, in the November 5th general election, you'll be allowed to vote for three candidates. The top three vote-getters will be elected to the office. This candidate's forum is one of two being presented by the Government Affairs Committee of the Scottsbluff-Gearing United Chamber of Commerce. We'd again like to thank the Rural Radio Scottsbluff staff for recording this forum so you can view it, timer for volunteering, the chamber staff, and Scottsbluff Public Schools for hosting us. On behalf of the Scottsbluff-Gearing United Chamber of Commerce Government Affairs Committee, and for my co-chair, Don Wolfe, I'm Bill Boyer. Thank you again for joining us, and remember to get out and vote.